Evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 p.m., June 3rd. City Council meeting will come to order. This evening's invocation is presented by Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you wish to. Good evening, you have your Father. Father, we come to you this evening and we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us, Father, to engage in meaningful discussion and help all of us, Father, to grow closer to our community. Father, may all of our decisions be righteous in your sight for our benefit and your glory. Father, please be with our law enforcement and all our first responders and keep them safe from harm as they serve our city. Father, our citizens, our staff, our mayor, and our council members are often tasked with making decisions for our wonderful city. And, Father, you could have blessed us with free will to make those decisions. I pray that we all remember that our important decisions always seem to work out best when we go to you first, Father, to pray for direction. And we thank you, and, Father, we thank you for this beautiful city. We are so often reminded what a beautiful artists you truly are. Continue, Father, to remind us that all we do here this evening, all that we may accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, Father. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Your name, would you please call the floor?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Reefler.
Here.
And city attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Reddick. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kim Shaw Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda? Please raise your hand and wait until called on. But since you've limited your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to direct all questions and comments to the council. If any council member would like to respond to citizen comments, please hold the responses until we reach council comments. City manager or city attorney would like to address citizen comments? Please hold your responses until you're designated for time. Would any citizen like to address the council about a topic not already on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address, and please limit your time to three minutes.
My name is Nikolai Matusavitz. Hi. I'm from the corner of the Golebulaq from Guitar Street. And I'd like to speak about the curb work down or spread, exactly. Besides, you're on the south side, my side. Can you bring the dialogue? In black is what was done. In red is where it should have been and where it was before. And in blue is existed, just began. The first picture shows a new work done. The first, the very first one, the picture here. Here, the new work done, this area where the water stays, there's negative pitch. In front of the driveway, can you roll? Here's the negative pitch. Three, second, yeah, three quarters of an inch. It's over here. Can you keep on? Another negative pitch over here, quarter of an inch. That makes one inch. Can you keep on? Okay. That is the end of 23rd Street by Bay Shore. Approximately, this picture shows with the level of the laser beam, shows 21 inch and there is further down probably three, four more inch. So that is what my level shows, the two levels, Go and Bay Shore, about two feet, two feet of pitch. Here, can you go back? Okay. Here, here, my driveway, there's no pitch in front of the driveway. The pitch starts here. This is the further from Go, Golebulaq is there, the further end of Golebulaq. But it's already probably five, six inch, the new one, higher than where it was the previous one. Can you roll all the way again? That is how it was. There is another one? No. The same, yeah. Let's go. There is, there was a B, the new one has no B. That's where the five, six inches are lost.
You've got three minutes.
That's all right.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm interested.
Thank you. Can you roll back? Okay. This is the middle of the street. The level was placed here. So the level itself has about, when placed on the ground, has about three quarters of an inch where the laser beam is. So that total three quarters and the one inch that was negative makes one and three quarters. This is the middle of the street that shows if the curb is begun from there to the, to Golebulaq, there is about eight, eight and a half inch to work with. Out of the two feet. Can you roll? No. Yeah. This is between 102 and 104, which is the second and fifth cause.
I apologize for interrupting, but could I suggest if you might start at the end and tell us what your major point is? And I see that you're supporting that point, but is your point that there's not sufficient slope in the street? Or are you saying that there's a dip? I'm not quite sure.
There's no sufficient slope and you broke my property. There is no room for pitch.
I have an idea. City manager Reefler, have you spoken to this gentleman about this issue?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So is this something that you can bring up during your, during your comments?
Yes.
Sort of explain what's going on? Because I'm completely lost.
Okay.
Is that okay? Because I think he's the one to speak for you whenever, whenever the time comes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Do we have other citizen comments? I see as we have nine. Citizen comments are now closed. All right. Is anyone here from the Pinellasunkas Fire and Rescue District tonight? Nope. Man, I got a last minute email from Chief Davidson, City Emergency Department. Okay. All right. Did he send? Let's see if he sent anything in a report. I don't think he did.
There is a report in the packet.
I don't think I actually printed that. Would you like to summarize, Mr. Reefler?
Looks like they had 12 calls for service in Beller Beach through May 27th. That included motor vehicle accidents, and correspondences, and electrical hazards. Looks like they're still working on purchasing the land of the new fire station, but it is moving along. And it's to replace the, they're continuing to design the mainland fire station to replace the 50-year-old station, and the personnel and research for pre-ontological trial isolation as well as their medical certifications.
Any questions for the city manager? No? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now we are on to the city attorney report. This is item number five on the agenda. Mr. Mora, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. The whole fire chief thing threw me off. There we go. All right. Let's go backwards. Item three, Mills County Sheriff's Office. Sir, would you please come up and give your presentation and...
Good evening, Mayor. At the council, my name is Sergeant John Sheel with the sheriff's office. I have the stats for the month of April for Beller Beach. We've had zero for the month of April, which is down from March, which is a good thing. We have three arrests within the city during the month of April, which are on these statistics listed there. There was 400, a total of 489 events within the city during the month of April. We had 562 units responding to those events. Very fortunately, we had no crashes within the city during the month of April. We had 158 citations to include points within the city during the month of April, which are the breakdowns within that, these statistics that were present. Does anyone have any questions?
Council, any questions? When you say traffic felony, is that like a DUI or a...
Yes, they are broken down, the arrests. There was one misdemeanor, traffic felony, which is a DWSR, which tried to, while license is suspended for a third conviction, makes it a felony. Then we had some other traffic misdemeanors that are broken down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Sergeant, who has jurisdiction to patrol the coastal pier?
Within the waterway itself.
Yes.
FWC generally has that waterway, and we support them within this section. It breaks up depending on the area. Sometimes it's FWC, sometimes it's our sheriff's office with the regional.
How do we address questions like the no-way rules around detected islands? Because it seems like that's been violated with more frequency. I understand that there was a manatee baby that was recently killed, at least a little further downstream, so I'm concerned about it.
The only fortunate way we can enforce those is whether, it depends on the section of waterway, whether it's the FWC or our marine units that were out with the sheriff's office. And it's just being out and about. We do have a larger contingency of boats and enforcement that we have on the water, but unfortunately, we can't be everywhere at once. Sometimes with Memorial Weekend that we just had, it was all hands on deck and everybody was out of the waterway. So we try very hard to be everywhere as much as possible. We try to be where the concentration of the most people are in responding for calls, you know, water rescues and disabled boats and things like that. So it's kind of, we have a lot of resources, but it is sometimes stretched thin.
I understand.
We try our best.
Amazing.
Any other questions?
To you real quick, I noticed in March, we had two assaults. Any general or specific information regarding that as to what actually happened?
For March, we had two assaults. We don't, I don't have those stats right now to bring up yours. Those could be open cases also, and we're not able to comment on any open cases. I would have to look into the month of March. It's our uniform UCR codes. Sometimes the cases are open and sometimes they're closed within arrest. If there's more late work or investigation that has to be done, usually they stay open until they exhaust all the heats or those are already done, closed by arrest. But I don't have no specific stats on those two events.
Okay. I was more concerned about whether or not they were assaults from one citizen to another citizen, and I would be more concerned if it was a non-citizen just roaming around that assaulted the citizen.
Yes, I don't believe that it was it, but I don't have the exact information. But I did make a note to try to get that information.
Thank you. Yours. Thanks, sir. I'm a little curious about the saltwater fisheries violation. Did somebody fish without a license or catch a...
It could be several different things. It could be a fish that is over or under the slot limit. It could be fishing without a fishing license. It could be mullet fisheries. It could be a plethora of different events.
Now, is that a handoff of them from the FWC?
Typically not. Typically, we usually, we check waterways periodically, people fishing from bridges or sea walls and things, and maybe it just was an encounter with a citizen that maybe they were, had an expired license or were not having a license at all, or had an under or over-slotted fish.
And my last question is, have you heard any rumors of another season of derelict boat hunting?
I have not heard that, sir, no. But I know the sheriff's office is constantly monitoring all the derelict boats that are in the waterways within Pinellas County.
Okay. I bring that up because you probably even saw a sailboat that was on its side three or four mornings in a row, almost all the way up to the, to where that little ramp is over there. If you hear anything, we'd love to, we'd love to know.
Okay, sir.
It's a problem, yes.
Totally understand.
Anything else for the sergeant?
I have one more question. Thank you. Last month, we talked about the fact that there were improvements at the intersection of Health and Causeway with AI implemented lights, and that was great news. My casual observation is that it seems to be improved all the way up and down the bay, and is that correct? Were there other installations that may have improved the traffic flow?
I know it's an ongoing thing with Department of Motor Vehicles and public highway with, also with the sheriff's office and things, but the county highway, they're always constantly working on them. So we don't, I personally don't get any stats that, hey, we're working for these projects and these are going to be in the future, and this is what we're doing. But I know they're constantly trying to work and improve all these lights, the flow of traffic for all of these intersections and roadways. I know it's a constant battle.
And that, on several occasions, managed to get all the way down to 18 without stopping, which is pretty good. I appreciate that.
And let me know how you did that.
All within the limit.
That's my hope.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sergeant. I appreciate all of that. Good evening. Next up, Deputy Trump for the monthly code enforcement board.
Good evening. Deputy Trump, local county sheriff's office, I'm your code enforcement officer. And we had a slower month this month with 24 injuries. Basically, we had, I dealt with homework, high grass and weeds. One written ordinance violation with a fine. Two unpermitted remodels that dealt with, one was a roof project, and one was a project that really hadn't started yet. It was more of a jacuzzi and an electrical issue there, but we took care of that. And I had two this last Memorial Day weekend where basically the guys were out working on a couple of these houses. They're trying to finish up the construction on it, but they were unaware that they weren't supposed to be doing construction on holiday. So I had a little chit chat with them there, very clever, to try and take care of that. And I added to the traffic citations myself, with one coming off of 22nd Avenue and ran the four-way stop and then a little speeding, so we stopped and, you know, gave them a little talking to the citation there also. I was able to get out on beach enforcement on four different occasions with ruling no violations or anything else seen as far as on the beach. Everybody's been behaving themselves and trying to work toward it. Any questions as far as this?
Council, I want to jump on something that you brought up together, deputy, about the fishing license and that. What are the requirements, like when you're fishing on the beach? I know in Indian Rocks Beach, you're not allowed to fish when there's bays, there's hundred yards, you have fishing pole. I don't believe we have anything in Orange Beach. You have to maintain, you have to maintain some type of license.
Yes. If you're, if you're fishing from the beaches, you're still required to have saltwater fishing licenses.
Right, right. I think a lot of people come down for weekend or whatever. It's very cheap to get.
It is, and especially if it's just a temporary one, like when they're here on vacation, they can go to Walmart, they can go to almost just about any big shop.
You can go online to get it.
You can go online. There's several different ways they can get it, and they're very cheap, just that they have it, so they're in order.
Are they ever checked? You guys ever checked the licenses or is that...
Yes, actually, what was brought up before with some of the saltwater fisheries violations and stuff, our marine unit will go out, they'll, they'll hit the beaches once in a while, they'll hit the bridges. They're not always on boats, they may be in their trucks or however, but that's why, as sergeant said, they'll stop by underneath the bridges, they'll catch, or catch is a bad word, but they'll make contact with several citizens and they'll check for illegal fish or illegal sizes, just make sure they have their, their licenses and everything too, so that may be exactly what was brought up in the last session.
Thank you.
I can add one thing to, in reference to the boat that is out there, the sailboat, that has been tagged by our marine unit as a derelict vessel, the process is not overnight. The cases have to go on for 21 days. Once the case is finished and they have deemed it as a derelict vessel and they have not been able to make contact with the owners or dealing with it in a different way, then the boat would be deemed as derelict and we can remove it. Then the next process is getting the contracting company out there in order to remove it. So they try, they're trying to keep it within the time limit, roughly then 21 to 30 days to have it out of there, but I do know that boat actually has been dead.
I think it's painful. I believe the county does, is that right?
As far as the removal of the boats, some of it is counted, but some of it they get through state grants also. W C actually puts out a lot of the grants in order to get a lot of these boats removed. So it's a combination of...
Very good. Any other questions? You know, I'm guessing that this list is very short because either, one, it's hot or two, they've heard the arbitrary new sheriff is in town.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, but we did. I mean, like I said, I've been working with Kyle and everything, we've been looking and trying to stay on top of everything. We just, it's been a slower month as far as complaints or problems or issues.
This has been one of the shortest lists I've seen yet. Why don't you just take credit for it?
Okay. Yeah, because when I come out here, I try to, even on the days that I'll hit the beach, I try to get up and down every single street in the city and every day that I'm out here and, you know, double check that first before we do anything, course, or anything. So it's just been a slower month. They do this together.
Good. Seems to be working out well here. Yes, sir.
Just one other positive comment. I noticed that the house on 21st Street, I guess it's in ownership transition, but it has been cleaned up.
107, yes.
By...
Yep. I've stopped by, I've talked to one of the workers there, who is actually a friend of the, I guess, new owners, if you want to put it that way, and he was actually starting to work on the inside. Of course, they had a mess inside, I guess, so it was terrible, but at least, you know, right off the bat, they got the front cleaned up, the yard cleaned up and everything else. So it is going much better.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Trump? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to report as far as announced, it's a sacred memorial day here in the city. Over the past month, I've done some presentations for the Florida Association Code Enforcement. I was just at the FCCMA conference that Kyle was attending, speaking on some new legislation that's been adopted relative to unsheltered persons. Got a presentation this coming weekend with the Institute of Elected Municipal Officials, especially for some of our newer officials, always a resource to consider with the Florida League of Cities University. I'll also be presenting at the Florida Planning and Zoning Associations week, getting back to things inside the city. Though we are in June, nearly three months post-session, there are still bills that have not been signed. We continue to track them closely. I think about big bills got signed just in the last week. For example, bills that are being held near and dear to the Pinellas Beaches, such as the short-term rental bill, still has not been sent to the governor for signature. As a reminder, that process is that, once it passes those chambers of legislature in identical form, it has to be sent to the governor. The governor has 15 days to sign any legislation sent to him. If not signed in those 15 days, it passes. As far as bills that have been sent, and there are dozens, all of them have been signed, only two have been vetoed by the governor, so we'll see what that means for the remaining bills that are coming forward. There is no set deadline by which a bill has to be, at least not in the Florida Constitution, by which bills have to be transmitted to the governor, so we await that. As far as legislative happenings in this community, we are approaching budget season, and I'm sure the manager will be speaking to that shortly. For our newer members, the budget has to be adopted by a federal person each year. That's one of the only legislative acts you have to do annually, so we'll be beginning that process. And more recently, as far as other happenings in the community, I did have a meeting about two weeks ago with Member Bankard and a member of the community, Mr. Manzo, concerning the Beller Beach and Beller Shore exchanges relating to the beaches and their uses. Two real issues going on there. One, the interlocal agreement, and the second issue being a concern of some residents relating to their ability to use the wet sand beaches in the same manner as the members of Beller Shore. Very productive discussion, informative, and I continue to move forward. I am in weekly contact with the town attorney for the town of Beller Shore and making progress on items both related to the interlocal agreement and just general, as getting better acquainted as we work together to name rate jurisdictions. Outside of that, the one other thing I would add, especially as Member Roberts mentioned it earlier, there is a property, I believe it's 10721st Street is the, is the address that has recently come into compliance, that is a function of a change, if not in ownership, certainly in possession, of the property and investment, investor-style approach that has brought the property into compliance on the exterior. They are looking to sell the property, continue to enhance the exterior landscaping, et cetera. I believe they're targeting a sale within the next week or two for continued compliance. As part of that, they have approached the manager and myself, a representative from the property has approached the manager and myself with request that this commission consider reducing the fines or otherwise eliminating the fines on the property, given the expedience with which they work with this. So it's a request. I think there's a representative of that property here now, it seems they may have exited the room at the moment, as I looked down at my anecdotes, so I'm not sure they're in the room at the moment, but that's not something that's formally on the agenda tonight, but was something that was asked of us to make you aware of in these hearings we could. If you wish to discuss it this evening as a commission, you could do as a council, you could do so during other unfinished business, but it was not an agendized item. For purposes of the record, we did receive correspondence as I was traveling to the hearing. I think that gentleman just re-entered the room. But I did receive correspondence from that property owner, from a representative of that property, saying, "Hope this email finds you well. As you know, this office has been working for the property owner. In order to deal with the open code violations and fines, we've made significant process, progress dealing with these violations. In fact, it appears all violations have been resolved and the manager has confirmed they're into compliance presently, so the fines should cease. We promptly assisted the owner, who was unable to act on her own behalf, and took all necessary steps to address these open issues. We acknowledge that the violations occurred over an extended period resulting in a formal invoice exceeding $50,000 in fines. However, since we were not in a position to address these fines, we respectfully request that these penalties be waived. Relatedly, we are also going to improve the appearance of the outside of the property, landscaping and other improvements with a view of listing the property over the next few weeks at a full fair market value. We look forward to your response. Thank you in advance for your professional courtesy." Again, though not necessarily part of my report, given that I think the member of the public who intended to raise this entered the room after public comment and... the public who intended to raise this entered the room after public comment and sees, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that as it relates to code compliance. And so those are, that's all that's, it's part of my report. Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
I just want to thank you and Kyle again for that B and B A, I think it was a great presentation. Our budget, we're pretty effective. Any other questions or comments from the city? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I do wish to make one note, because I just can't resist, Mr. Mayor, there are two very, very engaged members of the public here in the back row. My children are in attendance tonight, and I'd be remiss if I missed opportunity as a father to embarrass the public.
(laughing).
Summer homework.
(laughing). Up next is the city manager report, Mr. Rafer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off the top of some work down. We have Gulf Boulevard Underground Project, happy to say after we did the payback agreement for the spectrum conduit that is more than halfway done, and at this point, they feel it could be wired and drop it out from the aerial holes to underground with at the end of September, so that's moving along, hopefully there's no delays on that. The next is our Stormwater Improvement Project. Currently, we got the streets that have been started during the curb replacement, Morgan Drive, 25th through 23rd, and they're currently down at Cedar Spurs and Palm, next to the building. Right now, those are, could be the first streets that will be asphalted, resurfaced, and restored, and the schedule for that is late June at this point. The, we're currently, you know, part of what the resident was supposed to have, forgive me if I say his name incorrectly, I think it's multiple, so that's, he lives at the corner of 23rd and Gulf Boulevard. We've met with him several times. The last time I spoke with him about this issue was Friday before last, and being out of town this past Friday, when typically we do our onsite meetings, as my understanding, city engineer Larry Flutie had talked to him and has talked to the contractor, some of his concern is that there is a negative itch which we can't have, starting from Minister Highway, going towards a depression at the corner of 23rd and Gulf Boulevard. The layout of the street is, there is, by the sidewalk on Gulf Boulevard where the radius is, it is very low. It, over the years, has puddled and left sediment buildup, even growing weeds. That scope of the road is actually Pinal County right away, and looking at it, we think the best avenue approach is to start at a high point, right at the very beginning of where, you know, we just east of the sidewalk on Gulf Boulevard, and then, you know, continue our, continuous, you know, slope all the way down the Bay Shore Drive, but at that one spot, it has to come back down to meet the depression that exists in Gulf Boulevard, but we didn't want to match, starting at where that depression was, because our plan is that the county does something to their road in reshaping it to meet where our high point is at the start of 23rd. I'm not sure if I summed up everything, but I do know that the major concern was the depression, or sorry, the negative flow that was heading on the new curb, and what I told the resident was that our goal is to have the water flow to the east of Bay Shore Drive, one way or the other, where there's new curb, make sure it gets down to the end of the road. We have other issues at Bay Shore, which our engineer is drafting up an explanation that when we get to Bay Shore in a future project, the idea is we're gonna have to probably lower the inlets on Bay Shore and maybe even add an additional inlet in some problem areas to give that water to continue to get off and down the drain. But we are looking at it as a whole, you know, including Gulf Boulevard and the streets we're currently working on in a future project. There's a lot of areas of the curb that the profile is not your typical V-shaped valley curve, it's very flat. We've seen this in other areas of the city before, not fully understanding why it was flat, and I can't see exactly to those areas, but we do want to, when we get down to, for example, 19th, we want to look at, again, the total fall of the road, we want to maintain a continuous flow line, and we have the water flow to the east, but at the same time, we, you know, given that there is no ballot, there's no actual V shape in the curb, we are verifying that the water does flow. The concern is, and again, I'm gonna, we're working on cost estimates of what it would take as far as additional asphalt advantage, raising driveways to create a V shape in the curb, but in looking at it, the, to meet objective number one, which is to get the water to flow and stay out of the road, we feel we're meeting that with the curb that is installed, even though it is not, you know, the perfect specification for a valley curve. So that is another concern, but like I said, we are working on a report that I will share with you so that there's a full understanding of what we're doing out there before we get to the asphalt portion of the project. I think I'm under covered, and I know, you know, based on a diagram, I sent it to Mr. Flutie today, and I said, this is basically what you reiterated in your email to me, and he said, yes, and, you know, we will keep doing it until it's right. So just know we've been out there working on it, and I'm sure we'll be meeting on it in the future. And then the other portion that was brought up was 22nd Street. We did not have the curbs getting replaced up for the extent of that street, because it was resurfaced in the past two to three years. One of the residents on that street contacted me and told me that the previous city manager had told him that those curves were getting replaced. So after hearing that, it's not the ideal way to replace a curb, but it could be done, so we do have the engineer looking at it to cut out areas of broken curb where you're puddling and then, you know, replacing that. We're gonna get a proposal together for you to look at and consider.
Does this begin at Gulf?
Gulf, down to the four-way. When we were designing the project, we did include the radiuses of the four-way stop because there's a lot of puddling that's historically been there, so that was included in the project, but not the whole 22nd Street curb. That is all I have. Did I address all of your concerns?
In front of my property, there is no problem. How are you gonna fix this?
So we're going to ensure that they respond.
Okay, that's why I was trying to show pictures of, obviously, part of the curb has to be done, otherwise the flow, you know, is nowhere to come from. So the question is how much of the, the job has to be done? In my view, it's at least half of the street on my side.
Well, again, we're gonna lay it all out, like I told you, and I know we'll send it to you and any other residents on the street, but we've been looking at this, we've spent a lot of hours out there on the site, so we are taking it seriously and doing the best we can out there.
Thank you.
The code review right now, Mr. Sherman has provided me with the write-ups of all the recommendations that he's gathered. I'm cross-checking, you know, making sure that nothing was missed, and then we're gonna start drafting proposed ordinances for council consideration. These won't be able to be read until after the budget, the first of the year of, sorry, not first of October, but we'll continue to work on that and get council input so that we are ready to go when that time happens. The RFP for auditing services came in, due date was Friday. We got five proposals in, so that was good. I kind of think it was only six plan holders, so it was a good submission, and City Clerk is in the process of sharing all the proposals with the audit committee and finding out a first evaluation due date. And that, again, some of the proposals that fell within our budget, so that was good. And then, just as far as the budget goes in general, I've heard back from most council members, our first budget workshop is June 17th, so Monday, at 6:00, and I would like to either a Zoom meeting or if you want to stop by, just kind of do a one-on-one, sit down, make sure we go through everything. And that's it.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
So, so Kyle, on the 23rd Street issue that you guys are working on, and your answer was perfect, and I'm confident we said, we're gonna make sure it works, and that's, that's the message. So I'm just curious, previous to the improvements, was there any water on that street that actually flowed towards Gulf Boulevard?
I do not believe there was.
Okay.
I know that there was puddling, there was broken curb. What we did was we took a complete fall and engulfed the Bay Shore, and we tried to make it as continuous as possible to ensure that the water flowed down to Bay Shore, not necessarily possible.
The reason I'm asking that, I know on 20th Street, and it almost looks like an optical illusion, but pretty much from the midpoint of that street, on 20th, between Bay and Gulf Boulevard, the water flows pretty easily to Gulf Boulevard, and the county has a very big area where that water disappeared, which is great. So that's the direction it goes, I don't know if it was by design or it just turned out that way, but it flows well that direction now, so just wondering if that will.
Yes, yes. And again, like, we're gonna give alternative options, just, you know, because I know, you know, your typical valley curve has got that V shape, it may not, we, my proposal would be to raise the four boards and create at least two inches on each side, but there will be added costs, and we don't feel that, right now, we're at the top, which would be the west side, the water will flow where the curb is meeting the reveal of the asphalt, so it's not your typical valley curve where you have a flow line, not the old thing right there. It eventually gets to a valley curve because that flow line does go down as you get down the street and then you're able to make that shape. But our feeling was to create a valley curve and create that V shape is more of an aesthetic, and it won't be perfect, but we will provide a price for consideration.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Yes?
Regarding the proposal for the auditing services, I don't know if it's fresh from you or to practicing, but I did receive the proposals today, and I'm wondering if we have used a matrix or some sort of checklist in the past for evaluating those proposals?
I do have one, I know. Make sure she knows that's out. Anyone else? All right. We're on to item number seven. Ms. Rose, you have the floor.
Other than my report that was included in the packet, I have nothing further to report.
Do we have any questions or comments about items reported?
I have one free comment. I noted on the website that we have several listings where we say that there are currently hold and forward committee positions, but I don't believe we say what those positions might be, so that might be helpful.
I can add that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a comment about the board appreciation luncheon. That may be something we want to take a look at regarding, I don't know, their day, their time, because we definitely want to thank all of the citizens that participate in those other boards, and it appeared they had difficulty in actually making that luncheon because it was not a big turn out by any stretch, so maybe something we could, I don't know, just some different ideas on how to lay that out so that we can thank more and more of those people.
Sure. We can consider other avenues in the future.
Steak on a Wednesday. Anything else? Now we're on to item eight. This is the consent agenda, this is for approval of the May 6, 2024 City Council Meeting, and I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is what we presented.
Which is made by, Nelson Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roberts, solid favor.
Aye.
Being opposed. All right, consent, particular answers. Now we're on to the regular agenda, item number nine, Consideration of Ordinance 24-02. Mr. Moore, would you please read the ordinance and provide a brief summary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 24-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, amending the Beller Beach Code of Ordinance, Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 94, Zoning, Article 1, in general, Section 94-2, Definitions, to amend the definition of substantial improvement to reduce the look-back period from substantial improvement calculations down from five years to one year, and amending Article 5, Supplementary District Regulations, Division 1, Generally, Section 94-255, alterations, improvements, and repairs to align with floodplain ordinance requirements, providing for implementation, providing for resolution conflicts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This has been the second and final reading ordinance, number 24-02, by Title 1. Mayors and members of the council, you will, mayor and members of the council, you may remember the priority that you place on reducing your look-back period, as it's called, for purposes of FEMA calculations. This is the period for purposes of the 50% rule, calculating the improvements on a property to go back only one year as opposed to the current five years, as that would mitigate the impact of prior improvements before purchases and other similar limitations that may prevent people from doing prospective improvements as a result of past improvements, and so this is that ordinance, and the two parts of it, one is to explicitly change that, and the second provision is to make the floodplain ordinance reference to that calculation consistent with this change, in terms of what materials people look at when administration does perform that 50% calculation. So this is the ordinance for a final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we go to the council, maybe go to the citizens for comments, would anyone like to comment on this topic? Seeing as we have none, citizen comments are now closed. Council, would you need a motion to approve of ordinance 24-02? I believe, believe I heard a motion by Frank Banker, do I have a second? Second by Kim Shaw Elliott. Mr. Banker, you have the floor.
This really came to my attention, using the damages done by, uh, Dali Lance, your way, a couple of citizens and one in particular, and I didn't really know about it, took five years till we had, and while we were doing our code reviews, brought up, and I asked the council, or through the council, the officials, said, like, as Kyle said, we're gonna probably not get all our codes done till probably October.
They're active, just, to the extent they're more restrictive, there's statutory limits on what we can do this anymore.
And my, my whole plea was, we're in the storm season now, let's get this one going down, and I believe all councils agree.
And I do think it warrants that recognition for the council, every now and again, you folks should be able to pat yourselves on the back, as you brought this up, the goal was to do this before storm season was upon, and here we are on the first full day of, believe, the first full 24 hours of hurricane season, about second day, and here we are, so congratulations to you folks on the progress.
And this guide to the right gets beat up by citizens all the time, but he's a force in the wall. This needs to be done.
Any other comments? All right. Would you please call the board?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliott?
Aye.
And Mayor Gass?
Aye.
Ordinance 24-02, passing unanimously. Now we are on to item 10, Consideration of Ordinance 24-03. Mr. Moore, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is City of Beller Beach, ordinance number 24-03, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, amending the Beller Beach Code of Ordinance, Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 94, Zoning, Article 4, Districts, Division 3, Residential Loa, RL, District 2, Section 94-220, Minimal Living Areas and Setbacks, to reduce the site setback for specified lots in the Beller Beach First Division Subdivision, providing for implementation, providing for resolution conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective for separability, and providing for an effective date. This has been a second and final reading of Ordinance Number 24-03 by title only. Mr. Mayor, as you may recall from last month's discussion, this is a very, very discreet change to decide setbacks on a specific lot. It's really three lots, but it only should impact one lot, I believe, most directly. This was a greater outgrowth of the Land Development Code review, and issues identified by the manager in dealing with administrative issues in the community. We are reducing the site setback on a lot, the first edition, on three lots, and the first edition from 15 feet down to 7 feet. All other requirements still apply, meaning that you can't do a zero-lot line build-out within that setback area, you cannot have any structures. This just creates a little bit of a more permissive buffer between the two properties, between this property and the property being joined. Otherwise, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we go to the council, would the citizens, would any citizen like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing as there are none, citizen comments are now closed, and need a motion to approve of Ordinance 24-03.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Motion is made by Kim Shaw Elliott. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Mr. Roberts. Ms. Elliott, you have the floor.
I think our attorney, Moore, described this rather well, as always. This is a very limited situation, it really only impacts one lot, and it brings it in a consistent manner as all the other lots, setbacks, limits in the city.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add, because of the anticipating issues in the future, generally, when we adopt legislation, we do not legislate to specific properties, we legislate generally. The only reason you see that as an exception in terms of this particular legislative process is because of the way your code is laid out, there are setbacks by lots within, and further still by subdivision. So this actually affects three lots, but it is consistent with your existing table. We wouldn't change, for example, the high restrictions on one lot in the city, or something like that. We don't legislate to individual properties. This has to do more with the way your land development code is formatted, and how its format was affecting the specified ones.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We all know that things get changed for a reason. All right. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Rose, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliott?
Aye.
And Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Ordinance 24-03 passes unanimously. Now we are on to item number 11. Consideration of Ordinance 24-04. Before I call any, Mr. Moore, I just wanted to ask you, have you ever considered auctioneer as a backup?
No, that's purely a Dominican talent, Mayor. But I appreciate it, I may endeavor to go that way if this all doesn't work out.
You speak to your children.
Only when I'm reading a bit now.
Would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, this is Ordinance Number 24-04. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, amending the Beller Beach Code of Ordinance, Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 94, Zoning, Section 94-172, Fences. In Section 94-231, fences, walls, and hedges, to allow for fences, walls, or hedges, on seawall caps, providing for implementation, providing for resolution conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for effective date. This has been a second and final reading of Ordinance Number 24-04 by title only. As you may recall, members of the council from last month's discussion on this ordinance, this is to be, create a more permissive allowance for not just fences, but hedges to extend onto the seawall cap, and not extend it on the seawall cap, in that manner where it runs perpendicular. Concerns raised in last month's discussion, or reasons for this, would be to prevent dogs, children, and anybody else from going property to property by walking along the seawall. Technically, as your code is written, you are not allowed to have any such structure on or above the seawall cap, and this now allows for that, as opposed to the hazard manner, which different people have done it. One of the concerns raised last time was close within the seawalls, and again, you can have the fence extend over without necessarily having to place a post through, with support or deteriorate the structural integrity of that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to speak? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to approve of Ordinance 24-04. So, it's made by Mr. Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Banker. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a big fact in this plan, zoning board did have a hearing on this matter, and this is the recommendation that came from that, as Mr. Moore made some great statements about what the benefits were moving with this, and we're really just cleaning up this particular ordinance, so I think it's a story to do.
Any other comments? All right. Renee, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliott?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Ordinance 24-04 passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone, for looking on these three ordinances. Look forward to seeing them in the books. All right, now we are on to item 12, unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business?
Mayor, the only business I would bring, I would just like to know whether you wish to address tonight, is entirely your prerogative as council, is the correspondence I read into the record earlier, and I only raise that urgency from the property owner's perspective, is they're attempting to sell the property within the next week or elicit, and obviously we have, we have a lien, the amount of the monies owed to the city is $68,129.62. The context provided here, in the correspondence they provided, they make reference to being unavailable or unable to improve property. The property owner at the time was incarcerated for much of the improving violations. Some of our challenge was just in reaching the property owner, as a result of that, to make him aware of these deficiencies, but ultimately, I did want to make sure whether you took it up or not, did you explicitly state this?
Well, I would, I'd be more than happy to hear the citizen, or the purchaser of the home. I know he wasn't, we had citizen comments, but since you brought it up, people would be happy to let this gentleman speak. Please go up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what's going on.
Hi. My name is Land, Land Trust Chancellor. I reside in Beller Beach, in the town, and I'm trustee for the property that have issued today. As the city attorney stated, currently the property is in compliance with an ongoing issue that particularly neighbors were struggling with for quite some time, being depressed, and is actually getting rest of this time, and probably getting remodel, and this very more. So obviously, they see accumulated sort of expense during the ongoing issues. With that said, currently, it's, I believe it's something around $68,000. So, to my long story short, we will greatly appreciate if you will consider to reduce these fines. As I've been said before, the former owner is not well. In addition to that, she is, she was incarcerated, and incarcerated right now. So, property is up to cold, and obviously, we have all intention to keep it that way. I just actually had a very nice conversation with Deputy Trump, and I encouraged him to contact me directly if there's any additional things that we can do to improve the property. If you have any questions, I will be more than able to answer them, obviously, but if you will consider to reduce the fines from $16,000 to a greater, to much, to a lesser number, we would appreciate that. Thank you very much. If I have a second, any questions?
I'm going to wave the rules this time, go back and forth, last person to do any public speaking, and I'm going to open up the floor to the council. Do you have any questions?
What if any proceeds from the sale will go back to the owner?
Uh, yes.
How much money will go back to the owner?
Uh, well, the goal is determined by the sale, because there is a number of liens, legal expenses, it's not even calculated at this point in time, exactly how much will go to the owner.
Is it more than $69,000?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Roberts, who is the owner right now?
Uh, they are land trust, and I'm a trustee. They are the owner of the property, and a trust surrendered the property to a land trust, and I'm the trustee of the property.
Okay.
So at this point in time, under the supervision of the attorney, who is managing some of the legal and other issues of mistrust, while she's, as I said, currently incarcerated. So the property will be sold for lucrative, and the multiple parties will receive the proceeds, and of course, cover the expenses associated with the life of these trusts.
As context stating things that are all public record, that can be determined, within roughly the last 90 days, and I'm not, don't pull me to the exact time, but really, truly, within roughly the last 90 days, as he stated, the former property owner, for whom the violations initially attached, transferred ownership to a land trust, for which this gentleman is a trustee. During that time, this land trust and its agents and officers have brought the property into compliance, have paid outstanding tax liens, of which there were multiple years back in move taxes, they have taken to try and get the property ready for sale, and whether as an investment or just an arrangement between people who are appointed to us, which is of no concern to the city, that's how, that's how we got here. So to the extent that the letter stated, we weren't in a position to help, now we are, the members of the trust or trustee and its agents and officers are now positioned as owners of record to do those things, and they have done them, and so they've brought it, they're now getting it ready to list, and then, and from a code of compliance standpoint, and I, you often will hear me read approach of that, but from a code of compliance standpoint, the property's been brought into compliance. Oftentimes, when you have fine reduction and fee reduction hearings, what you're looking at are the same sort of factors you see in Chapter 162, which is the statute that governs the enforcement of fines, and code enforcement, and when, in determining the amount of a fine, when you have like a code enforcement order magistrate, the statutory recommendation is that they look at things like the gravity of the violation, any actions taken by the violator to correct the violation, any previous violations committed by the violator, and then says the board may reduce a fine imposed pursuant to that section. So they're coming forward to you saying, hey, my understanding of their ask, and I will let the gentleman speak for himself, is, hey, you guys want to incentivize compliance, we did compliance, and we did it quickly, once we were positioned to do so, so as, whether it is as a reward or as to unencumber us, our request is, show them incentive to compliance. Different cities have done that different ways. I think historically, the largest that I'm aware of in the last few years here, I'm not going to go back to 20, 30 years, but in the last few years, I think the largest was like 50%, some cities do 90%. It's really up to you and what you're trying to do here to accomplish. Their goal is, help us facilitate a sale, so that that's clear, and then you won't have this problem ever again, because the property owner, who has been, for reasons either within their control or otherwise, who's been the source of these violations, will not leave the property owner anywhere, so help us get to that, is their ask.
I have some questions. Do you have a buyer already?
Well, originally, I wanted to buy the property personally, but unfortunately, this life, this property is not really conducive to my life, it's too small for me and my small children. So there is a potential buyer, yes. It is also, if I might add, which is, I'm sorry, it's not directly related to the question, when you impose the fines to the property, the timing was very unfortunate, because when the city decided to impose the fines of $250,000 a day, that was pretty much the time when she went incarcerated. And obviously, it's not your problem, clearly, but with that said, it is, when she, when she went incarcerated, obviously, the $250,000 a day ended up pretty quickly while she was away. So, but to answer your question again, it is a possible buyer, yes.
Does this property trust only any other properties?
Not this time.
No?
No, not.
Okay, only, was this trust formed specifically for this property?
Yes.
All right, and no intentions of the trust possibly keeping it for its own investment trust, anything like that?
No, I don't, I don't think that that will happen.
Okay. My fear is, is that we wave the fine, and it turns into a vacation rental spot?
No, 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 it's not going to turn into a vacation rental spot. Okay, the goal is very clear to help the end user. As I said, originally, I was considering to buy the property for my personal reasons, but it's not, it's not what we're, but yeah, it's not, it's not the idea of...
And your existing land development code restrictions against that, create new enforcement, correct, but understood, understood, you supposed to make that clear on the record?
In fact, I got an offer, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I got an offer from someone who were considering to do just that, to have some kind of vacation goal, and I am not engaged in this conversation.
Well, I appreciate that. Mr. Banker?
I sat on this board and went over a lot of fines, 50% deduction, and everything like that, and I'm going to make a motion that would reduce the fine by 55%. Clear notes that there's no vacation.
Yeah, because I have absolutely no issue, I can make a definite commitment here. They are, well, obviously, I don't know what the people will do later on, you know, so when they buy the property, you know how they go.
Sure.
Okay, but as of the trust and as the trustee, okay, there is, property will be sold to the end user.
Will you explain, you've done everything you should have possible, since you took over, so I can give you the means to get 55% deduction? That's a, what is the deadline for what you're trying to accomplish? I heard something like a week. If there's something that has to happen in a week or so, is there any deadline at all?
No, there's no deadline.
Okay, and do you have a buyer who is going to pull out if you don't, if you don't resolve this tonight?
Well, I'm not really concerned if the buyer will walk away, you know, because obviously, it's a highly desirable community. Okay, so it is, I'm, I don't, obviously, I have no control of the real estate market, but with that said, I think that we'll be able to find another buyer, especially that we don't have a deadline. It's not, there is no deadline that we can't mean. Okay, if there's all the other liens, the property had been paid off, it had thousands of dollars in other liens, and you know, and I'm not going to bore you with a whole story of other things, that obviously, the property text was not paid for three years. It is, and it's been, it's current now. Okay, so there is already substantial expenses were paid, okay, just for the purpose of not having a deadline, you know, because there is, the texting option is no longer part of the conversation, or something like that. Okay, and because in order to do all the work in the house, we need to have the water, so obviously, I have to pay the water, and so, okay, so this is the one only lien that is obviously still there, and I'm trying to communicate to the best of my ability to tell you that, you know, we're trying to do everything that we can. So, and as right now, they're replacing the broken windows and cleaning the house inside, so because tomorrow, they will start flooring, you know, and that's it. So when it's done, it's done, there's no deadline, you know. So obviously, we would like to resolve the issue, okay, and... So obviously, we would like to resolve the issue, okay, and move on, okay? And it's also there are at least three neighbors, yeah, they're at least, that there is no longer, always the one, other things that, you know, I don't want to tell you about that, obviously, so.
Okay, all right. Counsel, I saw Mr. Sigannick's hand raised. Does anyone have a problem with allowing him to speak this night? Please come up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Just trying to do math, right, Baker? So sixty-eight thousand divided by two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and seventy-two days, and this, this trust that guy has possession, they've had a possession for how long?
I don't know the precise date of acquisition, but I think it was in late March.
So wouldn't there typically be, you know, to get clear title, any of these liens would have been paid, so we should have been paid as of March, so I don't think fifty-five, I think there may be a reasonable discount, but I think it might be worth the time to turn over, and you back into that date in time, if, if, I just think we got to make sure we all set precedent as a city, and people have different situations that unfortunately they go through, but the time that the city has had to enforce this, the time that our code enforcement has had to act on it, we should make sure that we're more than compensated for managing the process. So my recommendation would be, you probably give a twenty-five percent discount, just doing my math real quickly, but again, if this was properly transacted with the title, the lien would have been paid at the time of transaction.
Yes, but the note that I believe it was done is a quick claim deed, so you take, in a quick claim transaction, you take with all the comferences?
So if I just go back to the date of the quick claim deed, it was actually filed, I don't know if it was filed or if somebody signed it, but you know, none of the taxes got discounted, none of the water things got discounted, why shouldn't we get discounted for all the great services that we provide, and all the citizens enjoying the city, so that's just like others.
Thank you, Mr. Sigannick. Yes, sir, Mr. Roberts.
Is there, is there currently a mortgage on the property?
No.
No, okay. What, so let's, let's go down the road a bit, and this, when the property sells, and all the liens are paid, and all the bills are taken care of, who gets that money that's left over?
What?
When the house, when the house is sold?
Yes.
And there's, and there's still profit there, based on the sale price and everything else being taken care of, who walks away with whatever money is left over?
A trust.
The trust has?
Yes.
Okay, okay. With regards to advertising the sale of the property, is there advertising so that other people can compete for the purchase?
Absolutely, yes. As soon as the work is completed, it will be listed with the real estate broker.
Okay.
So yes, in fact, it has a sign coming soon, as we speak right now, on the property. The answer is yes.
Because earlier you said you had a buyer?
I know a potential buyer, yes, okay, but the property still will get a market.
Okay.
Yeah.
And for the city manager, counsel, that this money that is, that is due to the city for the fines, where would that fit in our budget, and how would we use that money?
The money would just come back in as revenue and go into the general fund.
Okay. All right.
No specific requirement? All right.
Any other comments, questions? I just like, I like, we don't like to debate a house, and I think you should do everything, of course, the county's not going to lessen their fine order and everything else, but this is where we live, this is what we're trying to bring to residents, that's why I believe fifty-five percent reduction of the fine, because as you know, she got incarcerated, would you say it was two hundred and sixty-some dollars a day, or a day wasn't paid or whatever, because it accumulates quite quickly. So she wasn't incarcerated or whatever, and that's not the point in voting, but the fine would be a lot less.
I totally appreciate that, and yeah, the timing was awful, and obviously, I fully understand that you live here, so you don't want to have an abandoned life of property for good works, yeah? Okay, so, and that's kind of the goal here, resolving the issue, and actually, as soon as we start working on the property, we couldn't have three days, so I could pleasure me as your city manager on the property twice, and I specifically asked if there's anything else that we can do, okay?
I'm still curious as to who is the beneficiary of the trust?
Who's the beneficiary of the trust? It is multiple entities, including, if this will refer to the former owner. Yeah, it is, so it is some current legal and health care fees, all the covered, all the sound proceeds of the trust.
And currently, the home is paid for one hundred percent? There's no debt on the home?
There is no debt on the home, correct.
I'm leaning towards the suggestion of Mr. Sigannick, and he, he is, advises quite often, and he likes to watch our money, and I think his suggestion of a twenty-five percent reduction is a nice way to reward you for helping the queen of our city, so that's where I'm, how about you, Mr. Roberts?
I think that sounds more than fair, and I think it's going to help you. This much is a fifty-five, but I still think it's a significant discount, so I'm, I also agree with twenty-five percent.
Just what, how many days is it towards the twenty-sixty day?
It was two fifty a day, and while the manager looks that up, there is a reported quick claim deed, that was recorded on, it was made on April twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-four, and was recorded April twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four, to the extent that informs your decision. So while I said the last ninety days, it's actually shorter than that.
So what would be, if we started from zero, and from the day of the quick claim deed, what would we be looking at?
Got two hundred and sixty-three days. From April twenty-fourth to, how is the date of compliance?
It was May twentieth of twenty-one.
That comes out of six, five, so. It's twenty-six days. Twenty-six. You guys are making a lawyer do math on the fly, this is highly, highly unkind.
I'm trying, I'm trying to pressure kids here.
That's sixty-five hundred.
Twenty-six, sixty-five hundred is the, if you, if you take it just from the date of transaction, so twenty-five percent would even be more than that, so. So that's what I'm, that's where I'm leaning, right? Counselor member Elliott?
I have quite a few questions. One is, what is the normal process to request a payment?
That's an excellent question, Ms. Charlie, and one of the things that your manager and I are working on is, is resolving that, has been a little bit more of how we've done it right now, where someone comes, usually they're on the agenda, again, I put it to your judgment of whether you took it up tonight or not, but usually, it's on the agenda, they request it, the manager presents, hey, here's what it is, what do you guys want to do? I, as a lawyer, try to remind you, we should ground this in things like Chapter 162 considerations, is that possible? But one of the, this is one request to be received, there's another that's we anticipate percolating, and one of the things we're trying to get resolved before that comes up, is getting a more clear process in place on the kind of criteria you consider, both for your protection and the property owner, so there's predictability, we eliminate any arbitrariness of the decision-making process, so, but present, to the extent the city has historically done this, it has come before the commission, and sort of a please, consider it based on the totality of the circumstances, and what are you willing to do in light of that?
And this council, historically, has taken a very hard line.
That is.
Against violators.
That is.
Not giving very little, and what I'm trying not to do is set a precedence, I do understand there was a set of circumstances where the homeowner may not have been in the best state of mind, and then also winding up being in custody, but I think, at the end of the day, the trustee, the family, everyone involved, I just, I can't let, I can't give up a discount like that, I just can't do it, because I'm afraid that someone will come back later and say, well, you gave this guy one, where's my discount?
I'm not persuaded. This is an investment opportunity. Properties are very valuable in our city, lots alone, over four hundred thousand and above. We all know that any command property is going to be subject to any accumulated liens, and that goes into the purchase price, and so either that is reflected at the time that the price is together and the owner takes less, because somebody else is going to have to pay the lien later, or it's resolved at that time. So I appreciate very much the essence to do this quickly and to bring it back into compliance, but that's also quite a big investment, that, if you get it done, the fastest we can be sold, and we're moving in property for a long period of time. So I'm not persuaded that we should do this.
Counselor member Elliott, you sound as skeptical as I'm feeling right now, so I don't know, I don't know what the best medicine is for this skin.
And I think also, I think it's good that we're working on a process, but perhaps there could be a standing committee or one of our other groups that can do some back funding. I mean, we can speculate all evening about how these mags came about, but if somebody's incarcerated, you know, they still have the opportunity to rent their property, they still pick it up with some agent, an attorney to help them rent it, and keep it maintained, provide property management, I mean, I...
One, one of the considerations for the process is looking to have a go as far as fine reductions, to go before the magistrate, and say, oh, the statute puts it forward, in which case, if not, that process would be here to follow, so, but that's, we are considering all options, whether administrative or quasi-judicial.
I think it's fine if we act in some sort of appeal process, perhaps, but it seems like a good process would include somebody still is in fact finding and pulling the story together and considering it.
And that's, that's the struggle that I'm having, is that this is all sprung on us, I don't want to get bogged down in an entire work session to resolve this, that's why I was willing to, here's gentlemen out, and find out what it was we were, we needed to decide on, and there are a lot of, you know, questions going on in my head, how much money is the trust going to make, and where's it all going, and is this truly just how much money can I get out of this house, that's been quickly deemed to the trust, it ultimately goes right back harder to the owner who just did with plain deed on it. So there are many, many questions I have, I'm, just to make this go away, I'm...
Can I answer any of your questions, please?
Sure.
I don't have any more time to do that, and there's, so, if you have any questions, I'll be, okay, yeah, I think, I think the problem's solved, okay, so it's in my view, okay, so obviously, you want to go clean property in your community, so that's what it is. So, so obviously, we can have a long, ongoing discussion and wait, you know, until the sale of the house for as long as you wish. With that said, I suggest maybe we can just move on. So with, you know, quality people that will move on the house, and, and sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Are you happy with the twenty-five percent? If we gave you that twenty-five percent, that we solve everything tonight, you know, with the file appeal magistrate, or to try to reduce?
No way.
Can I have the twenty-five percent?
No. Yeah, and I understand your position, I understand your position, and I understand that whatever happened to the previous owner of the property is not your problem, it is, you want to clean house in your community.
My concern is, someone taking us to court and appeal, and, okay, and then a judge will say, hey, she was incarcerated for two hundred and some days, I'm going to reduce it to...
There's not a clear, it's not clear that that's even a civil action, it's actionable.
It could be.
Well, anything could be, you can file anything, I just, in terms of how Chapter 162 operates, it's not...
Yeah, 162 and I have a front, but it clearly says, you know, we should consider reducing it.
Yep.
Okay, if they could like, and I think they could like.
Well, this council needs a majority to, to move on something like this, and right now, I see we've got one person, one council member who, it sounds like she doesn't want to give anything, we've got one here that wants to give a world away.
Well, give a world away, don't say that. I want to give something that'll get resident in this house as soon as possible, make sure there's no more legal action.
Well, basically, all the amount of fine, twenty-five percent off of that fine is a substantial amount of money, and I believe for sixteen thousand dollars, I could have made that yard a little bit back to it, so I think that it's, I'm willing to do twenty-five percent.
I'm willing to go with the twenty-five percent, too, if he's willing to drop the, you know what I'm saying, no more legal...
Well, I, I don't, there's been no indication that you pursue that as it is, or we can't find them to... I have a doubt of this, in this proceedings, and there's presently no motion on the floor. There was a motion made, that was not received second, there's no other motion, no motion made, as, since procedurally where we stand at the moment.
Well, there is a motion of twenty-five percent.
Right. I know, nobody made, nobody's made that motion, you made the motion for the twenty-five to not receive a second, no other motions have been made.
Someone would like to make a motion for twenty-five percent. Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye, and opposed? All right.
You do a roll call, please, just so that it was clear, I could not see your, your word.
Okay. Mr. Rose, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliott?
No.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
So, the buyer vote is approved at a twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Reduction, which is a reduction of seventeen thousand, thirty-two dollars and forty-one cents, all right, if my math is correct, we will clear that up, and I will, I will communicate that, and just to keep your legal counsel, we perceive that this council has agreed to reduce the fine at twenty-five percent.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other unfinished business? And Mr. Moore, you're not allowed to bring up. Understandable, Matt.
Just a quick issue, I don't know if this is unfinished business or not, but can we look at some of the adventures history? One is kind of like broken, not secured, some of the residents, some of the, especially in Sunset, asking me to see if we could eventually, that's...
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Any other unfinished business? I'll tell you, and I think tonight, we sort of did set a precedence for special circumstances. This was a little bit different circumstances than we normally have, where someone just ignores, 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 and deflects. This was definitely unique, and I think whenever, if we're trying to develop a standard, we should take this into consideration, I think twenty-five percent is a reasonable reduction. this into consideration, I think twenty-five percent is a, a reasonable reduction under sort of special circumstances.
As we develop a policy, we'll keep that in mind, and just understand as well, and I, I know it's, it's habit to sort of say we've, we've set a precedent, but each matter will stand on its own air, which is, I think, also what we're speaking to, um, you know, sometimes there's an inclination, just look to your neighbor and say, well, they got, so I should get, but that's, whether we talk about variances, we talk about, doesn't work that way, and so we can read that clearly and pause and follow.
Good point, and, uh, thank you for reminding us. All right, if there's no other unfinished business, let's go to item number thirteen, council comments, I'm going to start off with council member Banker.
Okay, well, there's two young persons in the audience tonight, while we take a lot of your ladies' time, hopefully tonight you can see how well he represents our city and many others, so we thank you for this, and I hope you appreciate it. Uh, Thursday's the ADN anniversary of Day Day, hopefully we all remember who, who currently serve, have served, and especially those that give all, fuel their day for each, like ours, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Banker, uh, now, uh, come, Shaw Elliott.
I'll follow up on my comments regarding Bay, Street East Bay, it seems like it is going a lot better, um, I did attend a webinar that was, uh, hearing on the improvements that, that we made on, excuse me, not East Bay, West Bay, um, I look on the website as far as the specific dates that they are starting a project to, um, re, uh, resurface and, uh, correct any, uh, the issues on West Bay as well as install mediums, improvement of the street that would be used for some decorative purposes as well as kind of redirect traffic a little bit. Part of the purpose of that project, in addition to just maintaining streets, is to better connect the Pinellas Trail to the rest of the city. All of that is in the news, except that it did not include connecting it via bicycle trail, there, there wasn't enough room in, um, the existing street structure to be able to enlarge it for, um, any bike lanes, so that's a disappointment, but, um, we'll all look forward to some more connecting opportunities when they start constructing on East Bay.
I'm going to, I'm going to echo on that right quick, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Roberts. Um, yeah, it's, it's amazing that we have the traffic that we do, and they're actually narrowing the lanes, and they're putting islands all the way from, um, Clearwater Largo Road up to Indian Rocks Road, and, uh, one question I had was about, well, are you doing anything with the merge lane? And you're trying to beautify, and you stop right there and you leave those ugly things in the road, but, uh, I also feel bad for the, you know, business owners that are along that pathway, because a lot of people are going to lose their ability to left turn into the parking lot, you'll have to go around, make a U-turn, and, and come back to be able to enter these businesses, uh, I, I look forward to seeing how beautiful it's going to be, but I also am worried about the traffic.
It sounded like you're pretty much on all of the projects, I don't know how much you're up to, you're just in the public, you have to go for it.
Yeah, they have the full lane laid out, I'm just grateful that they're not putting a dedicated bus lane down, uh, because that seems to happen occasionally around in the West County, and, uh, and then you lose a lane entirely.
Mr. Roberts?
Staying with the traffic mantra, I did notice on Memorial Day weekend, I don't know if it was something special that occurred, but the, um, traffic, I mean, car lights were bumper to bumper at nine-thirty or ten P.M. on, uh, Saturday night and/or Sunday night, so that could have been, uh, just due to traffic volume, which was not a great sign.
Mass, excellent, yes, yeah, not good. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Um, Mr. Reeper, the only thing that I really had is the traffic light at our intersection, uh, we, we really need to kill one of those green lights that, that represents going straight, and I'm going to tell you why, it's because I've been kind of mineral about, do we want one, do we want two, do we, you know, is this going to work at night? So, uh, there was a great big truck in the left lane waiting to turn left, he's going to go slow, I hop in the right lane, the light changes, and he came all the way over into my lane, I had to lock him down, and I can never look at him one time, I'll tell you why, it's because he saw those two lights over there and thought, I'm going straight down the road, that I wasn't going to make a left turn, so he thought the entire turn was his. I think, I think, look, between moving one of those lights, aligning them properly so everyone knows whose lane belongs to what, and then restriping the, the lines, moving them back, I think that that's probably the best opportunity we're going to have to, to face anything, I don't, I don't think there's a real good fix, but it can hurt, we can only help.
I think the traffic lights have an arrow, and that arrow actually will light, which you're going to.
Yeah, but drones can't see those.
But the lane you were in was specifically a green arrow turn.
It was the bright.
Green arrow turn, right.
Turn, yeah, turn lane, and, I mean, had to lock him down, that's kind of right overall, and there was nothing I could do about it, but, uh, oh, well, I will look, um, my, my driving horse, and, uh, just, uh, thank everyone for watching at home tonight, and, uh, you wanted to show it up tonight, thank for being here, and, uh, you kids, get to bed early tonight, all right? All right. The city attorneys had a hard day today. Um, other than that, everyone have a good night, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and one is, Mr. Banker, take some kids out for us.
Ah, yeah, that'd be fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.